Go ahead and call a mid-month meeting to order, please. March 22nd meeting. Welcome everyone here today. If you would, let's all stand for the pledge of allegiance followed by an invocation.
It's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Tim Anderson, please.
We have the Father Jesus, Lord, we thank for this day, thank for the new season, Lord. Lord, I just ask you, Lord, to bless our county, bless those here, Lord. Lord, put wisdom and guidance in our heart, help us, Lord, to go forth and be a blessing, not only to the county but to each other, and help us to go forth in grace and peace. We thank and love Jesus, in thy sweet holy name, amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Got some changes in the agenda. We want to add Mr. Ray Pickett to the agenda, and we want to ask for a closed session to be added to the agenda, and remove Section 7, Alliance Club, please. Do I hear a motion to accept?
So move second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand, five oh. Okay, motion to amend is on 3/7, and the work session on 3/7. I trust everybody's looked that over. Motion to accept. The motion, do you hear a second?
Second.
Discussion, not all in favor, five oh. Move on down, take our public comments section, as citizens are encouraged to comment, and we have signed up Mr. Jack Jones. Morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for allowing me the time to speak to you this morning. A lot of it refers back to, it's in the agenda too, Commissioner's comments, but the Jubilee is approaching 30 years' time, and the last three years has been a trying time for us. But this thing on closing the streets on Saturday night bothers me because we've had a couple of incidents at the Jubilee that ambulance had to come out, and we know that when we got something like that, ambulance and time is very important to the individual. But we have survived only on the means of the people attending for revenue, to pay our bills. And in 2019, when the COVID hit, Johnny and I, which were co-owners, put $10,000 of our own into the business to survive it, for it to survive. And last year was a lax year too, but the main thing I'm concerned is about, the reason we did this, bought these places, is to give the elderly people and the middle-aged people a place to go and dance and enjoy theirself. And that's what we have under a family atmosphere. But I appreciate everyone, and we got them, they range anywhere from 30 to up almost 100 years old, 96 years old. We got a gentleman from North France comes every Saturday night practically, and he enjoys, he don't dance, but he enjoys the music. And we've had others, I had a Mr. Fulp, I guess most of you know him. He's Bill Vermaelen's father, which is deceased, but he was in his 90s, and he'd come and he'd dance like a Trojan. But a lot of them dance a lot longer than I can. But that's where I'm coming from, and the Saturday night musical main, I have reservations about it. I think that if it's held on Saturday night, that I'll probably have to close because there's different reasons, and it'd be a loss of revenue, approximately around $2,000 for the five months it's open. I would like to make a comment on the Main Street of Music. Last year, I worked with it and worked with Nichols, and we got along fine. The Jubilee, I worked up every band that played every Friday night, and we did it through the whole season, and everything went well. So... I didn't know about this thing, the closing of it, until I read it in the paper, Allegheny News. A lot of that, a lot of things, I see it is echoed on the agenda. But we do have tourists that comes far as far side of Kentucky. A gentleman, I got a certain band that plays, and every time they play, he's there. And he's a very pleasant individual. We also have other people that come from Ireland, Russia, Australia, and have, and they're missing the one from Kentucky. And Friday night, Main on Music on Main did not interrupt. We all sold some hats and t-shirts last year also. I've heard of, there's a COVID relief grants, and I'd like to get information on that, see if it helped me any, you know, or help our business. But that's where we come from, and I appreciate the job y'all do. And anything we do, let me know. And we are in competition also, I guess, you know, but we try to make it the best, and I appreciate y'all.
Thank you.
You have any questions?
Go ahead.
Not right now.
Be worthy of you and the Arts Council, your group, sitting down together? You made mention, I don't think they'd contacted you.
No, they didn't.
Who you think that would be?
Well, I don't know where it'd be beneficial, but I can sit down with her, but, you know... I know that, I'm gonna say this, if it's off the record. The first year they started Music on Main, Robert came to me and wanted Jubilee to host the first event, in which I agreed to it, no charge at the door, the people were dinner, and enjoy the evening. The only thing I asked of her was to have the building cleaned up, which I told her my cleaning lady at that time was $50 each time she cleaned it, and she agreed to it. But when the evening was over, she calls me up and she says, "Jack, I'm gonna have to renege on you." I said, "What do you mean?" She says, "I ain't got the money to pay you." So, I says, "That's okay, I'll take care of it," in which we did. But it kinda set you on a bad takeoff, you know? But I do appreciate what they're trying to do, although I don't approve of it being on a Saturday night when everybody else is in competition for the same purpose, you know? But I appreciate yours time, concern, and thought, okay?
I, just for clarification, I have given each commissioner a letter that I'll be reading under Commissioner Comments. But one of the reasons, I spoke with Mr. Jones, his wife, and the founder of Allegheny Jubilee, Agnes, on the 17th of March. And Mr. Jones, main complaint that struck with me was the Arts Council is receiving funding both from the Tourist Development Authority and from the county commissioners through an appropriation. They have an appropriation request, and I'm gonna get into detail whenever I read this letter during Commissioner Comments. Mr. Jones pays for his bands. If the county commissioners vote on this budget the way it's presented, and they agree to fund the Arts Council, the Arts Council's gonna be paying for the bands that are in direct competition with them. This was not a problem, correct me if I'm wrong, but whenever the Music on Main was on Friday night, that was no problem. There're two different types of music here. But here he is, he is a taxpaying citizen of Allegheny County, and if the budget goes through with the budget request that we have, and the Tourist Development Authority, if they give the grants, he's competing against his own tax money. We're subsidizing his competition with this change of date. But thank you, Mr. Jones, I appreciate. I will go over in greater detail whenever I read this letter and give references, but I'm sorry that you've been placed in this situation.
It's all right.
But it is, you know, I don't mind. I have no objections, and I will tell you to your face. I have no objections with both events taking place on the same day. But I do object whenever taxpayer money is used to go against a fellow taxpayer.
A couple of weeks ago, on Saturday night, she had, Muddy Creek had three bands down there, and we knew from the past, the Arts Council sponsors them. And I think the tickets, some I was told, it made me wrong, was up to $40 apiece. And so, I don't know, but the thing gets me is when somebody lies on me that I said this, I said that. If I did, I'd admit it to you, but in eyes of God, none of us lie. We're supposed to lie, you know? And that's my belief and the way I am, but...
You expressed frustration to me during our meeting on March 17th that the Arts Council is scheduling events at Muddy Creek, and that the co-Vice President of the Arts Council owns Muddy Creek. Am I not correct?
That's right.
It is frustrating.
It looks like that's a conflict of interest, really. But thank you all for your time.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for bringing the music. This is music I grew up with, I appreciate it.
Heck, y'all been around for what, over 25, 28 years?
It's approaching 30 years, 29 years this year.
Until the last two years, you've been pretty active, but COVID knocked you out.
Yeah, the COVID, it's really hurt, and I will say this, I had some concern. My legs that attended the Jubilee made some donations, and I collected about $1,800 that year. They supported it that much, but we spent out something over $10,000. But it's always hindsight, and with this COVID thing, I realize it's, I don't know if anybody in here's had it, but I had it November two years ago, and it ain't no picnic. But it's something that's affected our attendance greatly. And last year was a really slim year, and we opened back up in May. And it's gradually building back up, but it ain't where it was at before. And I don't know if it'll ever get there or not, but I sincerely hope so. Because I don't dance, but I like to listen to the music also too. But fun place to be if you enjoy it, okay? Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments to make? So you know, we'll close the public comments section, move on down to the presentation of the board. Dr. Jeff Cox, NC Tech Pass.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Happy to be here with you, fine folks. Every day's a great day in Allegheny County, is the way I say it. So happy to be up here on the mountain with you. Here to share with the commissioners what I think is one of the most exciting initiatives that I've been part of during my time, back to being superintendent up here for many years, and now as president down at the college. I think this idea has a lot of potential. It's a new nonprofit that the college has played a role in helping to launch down in Wilkes County. It's called NC Tech Pass. It's a new 501(c)(3). We've got just three board members here at the outset. One of them is Lee Herring, who represents the Herring Family Foundation, Leonard Herring. You all likely know the Lowe's legacy. But Lee is one of the board members, and then Bill Warden from here in Allegheny County is another board member, and then myself. So the three of us are kind of starting up this initiative. Zach Bariclo is taking kind of the leadership role and operationalizing and running this thing. But it's launching in Wilkes County, that's where, you know, obviously Lee lives. Lee has put in about $2 million of his money through the foundation to launch this initiative. The plan would be over the long term, they're gonna be buying a building downtown in either North Wilkesboro or Wilkesboro, renovating that space and having this NC Tech Pass launched from that space. The building space itself is gonna be for like coworking space, for folks who want to work in the technology field. If COVID has done anything for us, it's accelerated telework and helped us understand better what we could do from home. So we have a great opportunity here in our part of the world to leverage this opportunity. We've got great broadband connectivity here in our part of the world, better than anywhere in the state and most places in the country. And what the COVID pandemic showed us is a lot of people shifted over to telework and just stayed there, and they've not gone back. We've had people moving into our area in a big way, bringing their high-dollar tech jobs with them, and they're doing them from here. And so this would help facilitate that, it gives them a coworking space. And the other piece is, we believe it is gonna have an opportunity for companies like, I'll use Inmar, down in Winston-Salem, they're a high-tech company. We're talking with them about having a pod there in that location where they may have 10 or 12 workers, maybe 20 or 30 as it grows. There's a lot of technology companies that are struggling to find tech talent all over the country, and this gives them a capacity to tap into a rural talent pipeline that they haven't had before. We got a lot of folks who would work for one of those companies, but they want to live up here. And so this is a kind of a bridge between just totally working at home or driving all the way to Charlotte, we're creating these outposts. So the first one is gonna be down there, likely in North Wilkesboro. And our plan is, what we'd love to see happen is, over time, as we build momentum, that we do an outpost up here in Sparta, and we do an outpost over in West Jefferson. So we'd have one in all three counties, for people in all three of our counties to be able to live here and work here and do it through these technology hubs. So I've got a brief video, just four or five minutes, and it does a great job of explaining kind of what the process is, more about NC Tech Pass. And I will tell you at the outset of this, that the person who put the little video together is Jonah Green from here in Allegheny County. So you'll see how well-done the video is. Drew, if you can... It doesn't have sound, okay. Well, that's gonna take, it may not be very entertaining if you don't hear the, if you can't hear what it is. Let me, I'll just, we'll be flexible and... Let me just tell you a little bit more about it then. I've kind of shared the overview. For all of you commissioners, you've got, I think Drew has either already forwarded or can forward this link, so there are two videos that are linked up here, so you can watch them on your own time. But one of them is just a four or five-minute video that just kind of explains the big picture of NC Tech Pass, and why we're putting it together, and how it'll work. And then the other one is about an hour-long video of the launch event we had back a few months ago when we launched this. But the long and the short of it for us is, the reason I'm here really presenting this to you all today is, as you all know, I serve on the BDC Board, and we're in some transition over there at this time, and I know you all have talked about that. But the idea that we have was, we've already got several folks in Allegheny County who are getting linked in with this NC Tech Pass. I'll give you two quick examples. One of them is somebody that Michelle knows well, who was interned out there at Pioneer Eclipse, a young man up here in Allegheny named Dante Shote. He's one of our first students that's in the cohort that's just finishing up now, I think in the software engineering little program that's been running for about 15 weeks. So we're working with Dante now on job placement. But the idea would be, he could live here, stay here in Allegheny County, not have to move to Charlotte to get a good, high-paying job. Another student is Matthew Rector, who I think started his own, I don't remember if it was not a landscaping business, but I think he had maybe excavating business up here. Has made some transition, decided he has some technology abilities, and so he's exploring this. He wants to stay here and be able to stay here with his family in Allegheny County, and so he's another one that's doing it. So those are both fairly young people who are looking to launch their careers. But you've also had, we've also already experienced some people here in Allegheny who were living up here, teleworking for another company. And in one case, the company decided they were gonna change their telework policy and make this person start driving down to Charlotte, and she didn't want to do that. She wanted to stay here in Allegheny. So through one of our employee partners we've developed with NC Tech Pass, we're able to make a connection, now she's working for that company and staying right here in Allegheny County, and spending her income here in Allegheny County. So we've talked here in this room, I know over the years, about the interest that we all have in supporting our young people who want to live here. all have in supporting our young people who want to live here, to be able to live here and have great jobs here. And this, I think, is one of the best opportunities that we have to do that. So the idea with the BDC is, we've got some space that's probably going to be coming open in the next few months, and rather than immediately lease that space back out, what I think would make sense would be to hold on to that and have that be an initial place for the NC Tech Pass to have a foothold here in Allegheny County. Over the long term, I'd love to see that three, or four, or five, or six, or seven people, which is where we think we'll start in the next few months, grow into 10, 20, 30, 40, 50 people and more, who have these kind of high-tech jobs that can be done anywhere that they would choose to do right here in Allegheny County. If that happens, it'd be great, long-term vision, to think about a downtown space that somebody like a Lee Herring, but an Allegheny version of that, might buy and remodel and repurpose and breathe some, continue to breathe some life into our downtown areas, those folks who are there working downtown or going to restaurants downtown and shopping downtown. It's all a big win-win. But for the initial part, we'd like to just have you all think about that space over the BDC, continuing our lease that we have with it, and having that be a location where we could launch the very first five, or six, or seven folks who are affiliated with this NC Tech Pass, give them a place to call home for their office areas. So I'll stop there, and you all probably, you may have questions.
One of the things that I just asked for you to take into consideration, I don't believe that we have upgraded the atmosphere or the HVAC system for the equipment room yet, have we?
It's on schedule.
It's on schedule. Please, if you're considering this, we are getting ready to spend money for that equipment room. Now, you're going to need servers, you're going to need things going into that equipment room. If that is going to bring in more heat, we've got to get it now. If not, I'd hate to see us spend money to meet the current requirements and then suddenly have additional requirements where we're going to have to go in and rework. If you could give us an estimate so that we could spend the money for future...
Absolutely.
That would be beneficial.
Spend it one time.
You know, I mean, it is logical. You've got the RidgeLink system that's in there, which is a military-grade fiber optic system at a handle of capacity. It's not even being tickled right now, I'm sure. But if we could utilize that, let us know what the infrastructure needs are going to be so that we could be prepared, I would appreciate it.
Makes great sense.
And I'm sure that the people of Allegheny County would. It's where we're going, it's a great opportunity, I agree with you. If we can bring it in, let's go for it.
Thank you, Commissioner Irwin. It's a good idea of being proactive, making sure if you're doing that work, let's do it for the long-term vision. I appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
I think, Dr. Cox, this is all private-funded right now, isn't it?
It is.
And does it look like it will be a continuation, or you're going to be trying to raise money over the years?
Well, that's a great question. It'll be some of both. I think there'll be certainly a need for some level of philanthropic funding to help support the program. But we're also, through the partnership, we're partnering with another nonprofit company called Perscolis, who actually does online technology training. So they're actually the one who are doing some of these short-term classes for us. The idea would be that a lot of people would come in and take these 15-week courses and go immediately to work. But for some of those people, they may decide, well, I really like this, but I want to come back and get a two-year associate degree in some field in technology. Well, we would obviously welcome that, bring those folks in at Wilkes Community College, and then so there's some funding that's generated based on them being enrolled there with us. And then the potential would be, if they want to go and pursue a four-year degree, we're partnering with Appalachian on the other end, so that there'd be a pathway for folks to kind of keep on going and getting as much education and climbing that ladder as high as they want. All that to say, Commissioner Irwin, there would be an opportunity for some, the college is going to be investing some in this with our instructors, with our time, with our energy. But to fully support it, there is a philanthropic side to that, like with the Harrings. We'll decide what that looks like, we, you, and us together in Allegheny County over time. If it grows and it starts expanding, right now, you know, you all own the BDC building, you have that space for the college, our side of it. As this grows, we can decide, do we just keep growing that and expanding that footprint at the BDC, at that location? If we do, then obviously, on some level, you all are subsidizing the maintenance and so forth of that building. But I will say that there's certainly an opportunity. All these companies like Inmar, or SAS, or whomever we partner with, they're not looking for a freebie. We'll have market rates for their rental of the space, and it still saves them a fortune over what they pay in Charlotte, or Winston-Salem, or whatever. They'll think we're the best deal in town. But it'd be, so it'll be, there'd be some opportunity to generate some profit to help with the sustainability, so it's not all based on philanthropy. But it's a blend of earning some money, the college being able to leverage some resources through enrolling students in our programs, and then also minimal. I don't see it being a big county investment over time. It'd be a minimal kind of partnership.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
Keep you posted. We'll keep you posted as it unfolds, but just immediately out of the gate, we're already making a connection with some folks here who are going to be able to stay here and work here, who otherwise might be leaving. And so that's right out of the gate, a net positive for the county. So thank you all. Appreciate what you do.
Thank you, Dr. Cox. Phil is up next. Mr. David Spicer.
A few things today. With the courthouse, the roof has been completely completed. So it is the right color, it is in good shape, it does look good. So very pleased with the work that has been done on that roof and thankful for it being completed. The inside, we've had some delays on that, but the sheet rock work is supposed to be, supposed to commence again, I guess you'd say, or start again this week. So hopefully, there'll be two crews coming this time and knock that on out and have the inside sheet rock work where the water damage was and all that taken care of, hopefully by the end of next week. So we've been working on dispatch here at the administration building. We have gathered up all of the stuff and cleaned out those rooms and made preparations for construction to begin. So the construction on that, as I understand it, is probably going to be a couple of weeks away in the beginning part of it, which I think, once this begins, it will happen pretty rapidly. Therefore, then, being able to accomplish our goal and having dispatch a little more user-friendly and better space in order for them to work. At the transfer facility, we have been working on some of the recycling materials. We have hauled an additional 4.48 tons of co-mingle. We've hauled an additional 2.60 tons of cardboard. And as of this morning, we had hauled another 3.79 tons of metal with another load on its way to Gordon's as we speak. So the metal that we've been hauling there has brought in some revenue for the county. As we know, it's in a neighborhood of $4,000. That figure's going to continue to increase, so we're thankful for that. Also, we have been working on the plans for the tipping floor. Firstly, the temporary tipping floor that we'll be putting in place there where the White Goods building is, we have put into the state for permits, and I did hear from them Friday. There's a couple of other things that will be put in this letter that will need to be accomplished, which is minor stuff, but we should have the approval letter for the temporary tipping floor this week, hopefully today or tomorrow. And then the other addition to the tipping floor that we're using currently, making it larger, that is still under review, so I'm expecting that to go as well as the temporary floor did for us on that. At 90 South Main, of course, that's going to be an ongoing project for a little while. There's some things going on with that, and those things will keep you posted as far as when construction's going to start and all those things, as you'll get all those bids and everything before you as we get those things accomplished. So we're still doing some work with that. We've been rearranging, we've been moving some things, we've been tossing some stuff, but we have got preparations underway for that construction to happen as well. At the Daymark Building this week, or last week, we did have a little problem with water. The pressure-reducing valve stopped up, so there was no water coming into the building, so that's been replaced and fixed. So they have all the pressure and water that they need for now. So all that's in good shape. Everything else is running along pretty good. Put one new employee to work this morning, so he came on in, and we've got one still to fill, but things is looking up, so we're plugging right along. Entertaining, any questions that you might have for any of our stuff?
We're going to check on the Veterans Park when those other monuments would be installed?
Yes, and I have not got a hold of them yet, but I will, again, reach out to them and see when that possibly may. They've got the glass on, I did see that, they've got the glass on, but as far as the rest of it, the brick mason was the problem. They was hunting for someone to lay the brick. So I'm not sure if they found that yet, but I will reach back out to them to see when they might be able to get to that.
Speaking on that subject, on the documents of freedom, whenever you speak to them, if they could give us a tentative date for dedication, we are getting close to Memorial Day, and it might be, it might be nice to have both ceremonies at the same time. I believe that'd be appropriate if the Veterans Committee would agree.
We hadn't talked about it yet, but we will.
I think that'd be nice. You know, kill two birds with one stone.
We will.
Can you give a brief update on animal control and how people get in touch with animal control?
Okay, with the animal control, we've been, it's slowed down just a little bit. We've had seven or eight calls this time for dogs to be picked up. We've had four welfare checks in the last few weeks. One of them was some Burrows, donkeys, whichever you want to call them. But we've been able to take care of everything pleasantly. We did, however, issue the first fine, and it was paid. So we did issue a fine for a nuisance animal. The animal owner had been forewarned and had been given a document as far as our animal control ordinance, and was given paperwork in order to inform them that their animal was a nuisance animal, and then when nothing was done, we fined them, and they did pay it. And it was all settled calmly and rationally. So it's been really good on that part so far. With the addition of the new employee this morning, we're going to send him to school as well. I do have two other employees, and both of those have qualified. Everybody's vaccinated except for the new guy, so we'll get Jason vaccinated and get all that stuff took care of as far as the animal. The animal shelter, we had another inspection there, and of course, we failed again because of the floor. So we are working with a couple of contractors to try to get pricing on something that would be guaranteed. It's not feasible for us to continue going every six months and putting this material on the floor that they say is supposed to work, and it just comes right back up. So we're working towards doing something different with the animal shelter, hopefully, and that's going to be a co-partnership with Twin Oaks as far as having that.
We pay for an animal shelter. We are providing funds for someone to provide an animal shelter. Are we also modifying at county expense that animal shelter? Now, it's bad enough we're pumping the septic tank out every time it fills up with rain. I know one year, we ended up spending about $3,000, $4,000 pumping out a septic tank. Are we now going to be doing the repairs for the shelter and paying for rent for that service? When does it get to the point where the county needs to build an animal shelter? Right now, it's $60,000. You're talking additional funds. That's a pregnant pause.
I can respond if you'd like.
I just want an indication here, I'm seeing an endless well.
I understand the county has a current agreement with the veterinarian and his group for the use of that facility. I am uncertain if that expires this year or next year, but it is within the next couple of years, I know that. And it is for a, it has been a set number. As you recall, we talked about this last year, that that number is now somewhat different in the effect that it can be determined by the housing, the taking care of, that number's flexible. There has been, to my understanding, repairs done to that shelter periodically by the county, at least since I have been here, and I have to say that I believe it was going on before I was here. There has been partnerships with the staff that have enabled our employees and their employees to make positive contributions to that shelter. So I can answer your question, say, the county has put taxpayer dollars into that shelter for repairs and maintenance. Question about when does it become time for the county to build a shelter, I think, is one to begin thinking about. But along with constructing a shelter, there also has to be understandings of veterinarian care, the, you know, all the components that go along with that. I think it's time we start planning for that. I hope that provides some response to your questions.
Now, memory is rather vague on this. I remember whenever we did the contract, and it was stipulated in there that if the septic tank filled, we would pump it out, and that was our responsibility. But going in and putting material on floors and things of this nature, I don't recall that. And to me, that is opening up a can of worms that could be an endless drain on the finances. So I think perhaps whenever you're ready to bring it in front of the commissioners, we start looking at that. I do know that we have advantages with Twin Oaks, and I'm not, you know, he doesn't believe in killing animals. Now, we have a specified period of time that we will pay for an animal to be boarded, and he will oftentimes go way beyond that. He does not charge the county because he wants those animals adopted, and I salute him for that. But, you know, there... But, you know, there comes a time where the taxpayer is not going to appreciate throwing good money after bad. We're going to have to look at this. Thank you, David.
Now, as far as additional funds, though, what we do with animal shelters already built into the budget, so I wouldn't be asking for any additional funds.
You've built into your budget replacement of floor material?
I've built in.
Are we padding our budget a little bit? Are you admitting to that?
No, 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 no.
I didn't think you were, but.
No, we're not padding, but maintenance for that is built into the budget, so additional monies would not be necessary.
So we were aware that we may have to replace the material on the floor?
Well, it's been an ongoing thing for the last couple of years.
Okay.
So I, and, and, and to be quite honest, my, my budget for the animal shelter has not changed.
Okay.
It's still the same amount.
Whenever you started saying that, I have a tendency of saying, I'd like a contract with the county to replace the roof on my house.
Yeah, but no, it's not, and, and it's not, no.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the job you do.
About this animal shelter that John keeps referring to, the basics has been there for years that Twin Oaks Vet has handled our animal control about sheltering dogs, cats, putting them to sleep. When Nash was up here about two years ago, when everybody was complaining about having to pump the septic tank out, part of that issue was DOT, the way that the road was sloped, and the ditches they had cut around the water into the vet center. And that water, I don't know if anybody ever figured out how, but it got into the septic tank. So DOT has done some work, but the water that comes off 21, 221, comes off Twin Oaks Store, goes down the road about 50 or 60 feet, then there's a 12-inch culvert that cuts straight over to the vets' land. That water runs in there. Ash, when he was here, said he puts about $1,000 of his own money into the shelter, into the shelter, taking care of the animals every month. We have certified vets that put the animals to sleep, working through Twin Oaks. Our previous maintenance manager estimated that if we built our own shelter three years ago, that cost would be over $1,000,000 for the facility, then you have to have the people to run that facility. Right now, Nash walks those dogs four or five times a day, every animal, even if they're there to be put to sleep. At that time, he was up around 80% adoption rate, because he keeps the animals longer than what's required by the state. If we start, our length of time to keep the animals is around five or seven days, and then they're destroyed and thrown into the trash dump. But Nash through Twin Oaks Store, to me, has done an outstanding job and has saved this county thousands of dollars a year, plus he's saved thousands of animals. You have money already built into your budget to work there. This isn't an increase. It's just a continual maintenance, like every building we have in this county is a continual maintenance. So as of right now, until somebody can show me figures where it would save the county money, I'm happy with the situation we have that Dr. Williams performs at Twin Oaks Vet. That's it.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Thank you, David. Appreciate it. Financial update, this is April Hand.
Morning.
Morning.
Passed out some paperwork.
Thank you.
Year-to-date revenue, $15,771,186. That represents about 90% of the current anticipated revenue in, in the current budget. Year-to-date expenditures, $11,821,719, and that represents about 67% of our current budget. And then the approved current budget is $17,611,637. And we're about 71% time-wise into the budget for the year. Bank balance as of Friday, $16,528,888.15. I do want to point out that our bank balance did rise quite a bit in the past month. The reasons for that is we have received the SCIF money from the states, the $2 million for the courthouse, and the $200,000 for the capital projects that the board approved that came from SCIF money also. We have also received about $85,000 to $90,000 in a law enforcement grant that was also approved in that state budget. The reason you don't see those in our revenues and expenditures, all of that money has to be put in separate funds. It's like the American Rescue Plan money. We have that money, but it's represented in a separate fund, so I just wanted to point that out to the board. Bank balance as of 3/15/21 was $9,692,821.81, and bank balance as of 3/31/2020 was $5,919,503.42. Our net financials, taken to account the year-to-date revenue and expenditures in the general fund only, is $3,949,467. And then I have your auditive fund balance as of fiscal year '21, the $5,685,551. Can I answer any questions about the first part of the finance report?
Right here.
Your second page is just an update on sales tax. Current year-to-date on the local option sales and use tax, we have received $682,623.88. This time last year, we had received $738,967.22. So as you can tell, we did have a larger payment this past month, but we're still, it's leveled off some for the year. So any questions about anything on the report?
Is everybody good? John?
I got one question. Basically, you're showing $101,000 less than we collected last year in sales tax.
Actually, the $101,000 that you see at the top of that report is actually what was, what was received this month.
Oh, okay.
It's just the way I read the report.
We're a little bit down. Do you attribute that to the, the releasing of the COVID? Nobody, you know, everybody's not shopping on Amazon now where we collected taxes.
It could be. I mean, folks are getting out and.
Getting out and they're spending their money in other counties, and they're getting the benefit of the sales tax.
That is correct. It could be correct. I don't have that information, but.
I wouldn't bet against it.
No, I wouldn't bet against it either.
Okay, thank you.
April, would you may, you may identify on the sales tax, how many months left we anticipate receiving?
That, that is only through January, so we just now receive Januaries because there's a reconciliation process at the state, and then it comes to us, and it's about six weeks behind. So we still have five months of sales tax to receive in this budget that we're currently in, so.
The other thing is on the first page, when you see your net financials, in mind, that does not reflect any of that grant funding. That is all general fund money.
I think you have a line item transfer for the transfer facility next. We need to transfer $42,750 to disposal. We're transferring that from disposal of wood products, from removal of white goods, and from site preparation. All those monies are available. The increased cost is due to earthquake damaged homes and one fire damaged structure that came before the board. It's a reason for the increase in expenses.
Entertaining motion?
So move.
Got a motion here, second?
Second.
Further discussion? Not all in favor, raise your hand. Five oh. Thank you.
Thank you.
This time, I'm going to change the pace right here just a little bit and introduce Mr. Ray Pickett.
Commissioner Chairman, thank you for the opportunity to come over and introduce myself to all of you. Some of you may know we had a big caduwe in the state this year. We drew new districts for House and Senate and Congress, and I have the privilege of representing Allegheny County now. I'll be taking over for Representative Sarah Stevens, that did outstanding job for Allegheny County, and I look forward to serving in the same capacity. She has filled me in the best she can, but I want to come over and meet everybody in person and look forward to working with you on anything you might need. I will make sure you have my full contact information. You can contact me anytime you feel like to whatever you might need. And we've done some good things so far this year in the state. We've passed out some, we had a good budget this year, and we look forward to seeing what happens with that money. I hear some, I've heard a few conversations here, sounds like you might need some more assistance here and there, so feel free to, to come to me. Any projects you've got, it doesn't hurt to ask, bring them to me, and let's see what we can get. We can even do it this short session. If there's something that you've got pressing that may need to be done, we'll see if we can help you out. But I do, I'm on, I'm going to stay through the rest of your meeting. I want to, I want to get a chance to meet each one of you and talk to you a little bit, if you've got the time after your meeting. I do appreciate the opportunity to speak, and I'll see you after the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming over. Cell phone tower, Mr. Travis Dalton.
Morning, Commissioners.
Good.
Was just asked to be here to join in on the conversation. Y'all had some questions, so, on cell phone tower ordinance?
Questions on the ordinance?
Chairman, I'll shed some light. I think there's been discussion at the board level about the ability to co-locate on cell phone towers for emergency services, county use, et cetera. And I think that's how, Travis, that the question came up, because there was some uncertainty on how the ordinance currently reads, what it allows for, you know, how do we accomplish that?
Current ordinance, the section you are looking at is the section M, and it's local government access, and we added this back in, it was 46, 2015. States that owners of towers shall provide Allegheny County and/or its political subdivision or agent with space on the tower at no cost to the county at an elevation of at least 130 feet or at another height to be determined jointly of the owner and the county to accommodate the county's needs. We added this, and some of the first few AT&amp;T towers that were put in fell under the old ordinance before we added this section M in, but most of the new towers since 2015 falls under this requirement. Most of them have three or four spots. I know a couple of towers have two, but it don't say which spot, as long as we're at 130 feet elevation, they have to provide us the location to put 911 equipment.
So the majority of the towers fall under the new regulation?
The new towers, yes.
How many total towers do we have? Do we know?
Don't know.
Several of them, yeah.
We had, there's 10 to, 10 to 12 new ones put in, time is upon.
It's good to know.
There were maybe two or three that were up but not active, I think, when that was, when that rule came in.
They fell under the, I'm pretty sure the one at Piney Creek School Road, one that was from Parkers in Glade Valley. I know those two were before we amended ordinance to change.
But in Twin Oaks, at Twin Oaks, they couldn't activate either.
Because they're 125 feet heights. Because when we, on the 6th of 2015, when we changed the government access, we also increased the height of the tower to 195 from 125.
That's the biggest concern, Bobby.
The height now is 195.
95.
And the long and the short of it about sharing tow, the tower space for the county, Drew Redd had something about in the ordinance, I guess that's what, what you're reading now. So do, do we get any space, and it's supposed to be at a no charge?
Yes, no, I mean, the county has to provide the funding to put the equipment on the tower, in the equipment, but we do not, the county does not have to pay a lease to the tower holder.
The space, we don't have to pay for that space.
Hours after 46, 2015.
John?
I'm just going to give you some of my background. I graduated from the Inner Radio Frequency Management School in Biloxi, Mississippi. It is the only school on the face of the earth for frequency management, and we have students from all over the world that come there because of the curriculum that is taught. Now, whenever you say that the county will have access, we can ask for access. However, if that county equipment is going to cause harmonic or co-channel interference, our equipment will not go over there. There's a lot of technical areas that enters into it that you just can't with a broad brush say that we're going to put equipment up there. A harmonic is a doubling of frequency. It interferes, it will actually prevent a emission from going out if you have a harmonic or if you have co-channel interference. Whenever you started getting in your car radio and you started getting at the edge and you get two stations coming in, that's kind of an example of co-channel interference. So there's a lot of technical things that are going to go in there before the county is going to be able to put anything up. One of the problems that we have in Allegheny County is 192 feet. If you want to know what the radio line of sight is, take the square root of the height of the antenna. If you have a 100-foot tire, radio line of sight is 10 square, 10 miles in diameter. But we've got a little problem around here. It's called mountains. So you're going to have terrain masking. A lot of things will go into this. You can say that the county is going to have access, but it's not guaranteed. And even if we do put an antenna on it, it's not going to provide that much coverage. To provide coverage, you're going to have to look at the ridge line and see these tall sticks that are sitting up there, and whenever you start putting something on them, because there's so few and the expense involved, we're looking at, what, $80,000 for a 70-foot tower here? You put up a 1,000-foot stick, you're talking millions, if the FCC, if the FAA is going to authorize it. So that's part of the problem. The towers are going to go where it's, where it's going to provide the coverage for the cell phones. That's the primary purpose. It may not help the county that much whenever we do it. So we've got something in there. Whether we're going to be able to take advantage of it or not is dependent upon a lot of things. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Travis, can you get the locations, the ones that are not in the new ordinance, just their location? Just, or location of all of them, but the ones that are not in the new one sometime?
Yeah, it'd be easier to get you the ones that are available, because you know, there's some of the towers, like Green Mountain, the one on the other side of the parkway where the Viper Tower is, those are pre-permitted, and some of them, ones that are, I don't know on those dates, but everything from here on, I have a list.
What falls under this new regulation that benefit the county?
Go to FCC.gov forward slash towers. Put in the zip codes for Allegheny County. It will show you the, every tower that has been registered with the FCC and, or the FAA. And get, get, get your pencil sharp, because you're going to be surprised.
Thank you, Travis. Appreciate it. Correction, Director, Mr. Cole Edwards.
Morning. In your package, you've got a lease agreement for the fairgrounds concessions. Month ago, you approved accepting the bid from Mr. Derek Brown. If you have any questions about the lease agreement, I'll be happy to answer it. If approved, it'll go into effect April first of this year and run for one year until March thirty-first of next year. It has been reviewed and approved by legal.
Do we have any questions about it?
None.
I don't have a question. I just have a comment that, you know, you look at this document, it's four or five pages long, just to run the concession stand. That, we have to go through and be sure everything is legal that we do in the county. And that's what we pay our general counsel for, is to keep us on track. So, you know, it's a, it's a small project, but there's a lot of paperwork that has to be involved to cover the county and the taxpayers of the county. I just wanted to make that point.
Thank you. Here a motion. So move. Motion here, second? Motion second, accept this. Any other questions? Not all in favor, raise your hand. Five oh.
Thank you.
Thank you. Level entire contract, Mr. Daniel Rotten, Emergency Management Coordinator.
Morning. Good morning. I were on to lease and, and agreements and other agreements. You have another one in your packet in regards to the nine-one-one tower project. If you remember the last meeting, the board decided to go ahead and award that bid to Mobile Communications, so, if there's questions about it, I'd like to ask the board to approve that agreement with the understanding that notice to proceed and everything else.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion here, second?
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? Not all in favor? Five oh.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Fix is Bill four seven three, Ms. Heather Klein.
So this is something that's pretty recent, and I think it's the legislature trying to prevent there from being conflicts of interest between County Board of Commissioners and the nonprofits or other organizations that the county might be funding. This is still something that I think is unsettled. There's still interpretation going on in regards to how this affects the counties and the commissioners in their duties, you know, as parts of boards for these nonprofits. I talked with one of our school of government employees in regards to this, going back and forth based on the questions that the board had. The, the interpretation is that it is still possible for the board to be a part of a nonprofit, that they would recuse themselves from any decisions that are made in regards to funding that would be provided to the nonprofit. Complication comes in when we are talking about whether or not these appropriations are being made under a contract, or are they just being made under appropriation in the budget? And there's the complication. The, the advice that I'm getting in regards to this new section, our senate bill, is that I don't think that we are individually issuing or doing contracts between these nonprofits. I think all we're doing is appropriating money through the budget. And if that's the case, then the commissioners are going to have to recuse themselves from any decisions for these appropriations unless you don't make the appropriation, and then you have a special line item that is introduced after the fact for the appropriation. Otherwise, it's a conflict of interest for the board to be making decisions without there being a separate contract for the appropriation. So I, I don't, the difficulty obviously is that the board is on multiple nonprofits, and I'm, I'm not sure of how you can disconnect yourself from the service that would necessarily be required for some of the organizations, because I think some of them require there to be a board member. So then how do you figure out the appropriation contract conflict issue? And that's still kind of up in the air, but, you know, I have received some guidance on that, which is that that grant of money just through the budget is not a contract, and there's where the conflict comes into play, and now you have an issue, right? I, I know. So there's no definitive answer other than there shouldn't be a decision made on an appropriation by a board member that also sits on the nonprofit where the appropriation is made.
This is, this is an ord, or a general statute passed by the General Assembly. And I don't know that, that they realize the complications that came along with the statute. I don't know if it came out of the senate or out of the house, you know, where the regulations occurred. But you caused a lot of problems by passing something like this without really looking, I guess, at the side effects or the collateral damage that it can cause. And it's something General Assembly may, may want to look at or fine tune in the future.
I think that is a real difficulty for a small community, because you don't have as many people that are available to serve on these nonprofit boards, and it ends up being a major overlap. And the county does fund a lot of these nonprofits in, in many, multiple ways, whether it's a small amount here or there, a pass-through. I mean, there's, there's a lot of connectivity that, that disassociating the board from is going to be very difficult. And there, there hasn't really been a final interpretation of this, because I, I think the difficulty is, there's, there's multiple ways to interpret this, and the representative that I've talked to, she's done two articles already on it, and it's still not settled. So we're really not a hundred percent sure whether we're going to run into it being a conflict or not. I, I would say we're probably leaning on that line, if we're looking at it, that it's a conflict versus it not being a conflict, and now having to try to figure out how can we remove that conflict from the appropriations.
Is it just a conflict, or is it an appearance of a conflict?
Well, appearance of a conflict would be immediate based on what the language of the, of the senate bill says. Now, whether or not it actually is, that's the determination that's trying to be made. And I still think if we're looking at the line, it's not just the appearance. We probably are with the appropriations, the way that they're being made, and the board being part of the nonprofit. And I'm not really sure. I, I don't, I think it's possible, I think it's possible that we could remove one member, you know, if there's an issue with maybe one from that vote. But the con, the, the complication of it is that you're still voting on the overall budget, which then includes that appropriation, and I'm not sure how you can remove that. So it's still a conflict if, you know, you could potentially be looking at every single member on the board having a conflict because you have appropriations for all the nonprofits that you're on, and now you have to vote on an overall budget, which includes the appropriations for each of these nonprofits. So now you effectively have no votes from the entire board on any budget.
That's why we have the school of government to try to wiggle us through this.
The school of government has said that the resolution is to resign from the boards.
Or to have contracts for the amount that is being given, and then potentially work the line item, and then you could have the board member remove themselves from the vote on the line item for a contract. So I, I'm not really sure how we would work that at this point. And I don't know how many appropriations we're talking about also. So our complication is, I, I don't really know how bad this really is for us. I know that it's bad in the sense of the votes, and how are we going to vote on an overall budget with all the conflicting appropriations? But I still don't know how many we're talking about, and how many boards, and money, and it's a lot.
Hey, Mr. Chairman.
Sir, well, part of the problem we've got, Bobby sits on the agricultural board. We give him money. He, he's reclusive. I sit on council on age in Allegheny County group home. We give them money. I'm reclusive. How can I, I can't vote on the final budget. Every one of us sit on a board that we give money to. But I got to defend the legislature. The reason why this came about, and please correct me if I'm wrong, I won't use Rocky Mount's name, I believe it was Rocky Mount. But we had an org, we have a community that a board member owed a water bill in excess of forty thousand dollars. They couldn't collect it because he was preventing it. That's why you have the section in here where they can take your money. It's kind of like, I'm a private pilot. You read the FAA regulations, you can relate to the crash. They legislate after they realize there's a problem. Someone was abusing this process, and they legislated to get rid of it. It needed to be, let's face it. But they did not look at the minutia that it would cause, the problems that it would cause coming down the line.
You're correct.
Budget committee is sitting here right now, and technically, if they knew what was going on in the budget committee, they could probably be charged and convicted, and if they would be guilty of a cat, class H felony? What's a class H felony? Other than they would have to resign from the office, because you can't hold office, an elected office, if you're a convicted felon. And you become a convicted felon for doing the job.
Yes, and trying to help on a nonprofit that needs the help also from its board members to be able to make decisions on how to run the nonprofit to benefit the community. So I think we're in a real quandary, and I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure how we're going to figure this out. So, you know, this is something to bring up to you, to say, okay, now we need to figure out a workaround so that we're not going to be in violation, and we can still continue to help the nonprofits in the community.
And that's why we turned to the workaround, and according to the town council meeting where they discussed this, their workaround was resign from the committees. And we've also got another problem.
Mark?
You, you look at the, the TDA. They are a subcommittee of the county commissioners. Do they fall under this statute also?
I don't think so, because they're not board members themselves. I think there's the conflict. So, and I think with the TDA, we're not talking about it just being, you know, them potentially being a subcommittee of, of this county. That could be across the state. So I don't think that they were necessarily talking about that. They were talking about actual elected officials and, and the role that they're going to play in these conflicts, and being part of the nonprofit, and then the appropriation from the county. The, the impression is there that there is a conflict inherently, because you're the governing body making decisions about money that is going to a nonprofit for which you are also representing.
Oh. Now, these, these various boards that we sit on, we're, we're sitting there as members of that body. And then I'm thinking of the ones that I'm serving on. I don't know how it would be with the rest, but what would it be if we were sitting there as ex officio members?
There's entirely a possibility that that wouldn't affect it, but I think that's something that's a, a question. It's not something that's settled at this point. So, you know, what we're doing right now is just speculating on how we can interpret this and get around it. So that might be another workaround that is a possibility.
And there's, it actually gives under C, asking, or grant, getting permission from the local government commission. I mean, so that's mentioned in the possibility.
Well, but then, if we're going to do that, then I think obviously, excuse me, we're going to end up with maybe a list of the nonprofits that are being served on, and, you know, the appropriations and how all that works to be able to get permission. So it's going to take a lot of effort to try to figure that out, so.
I'm just saying, these are some other questions to be thrown out there to, you know, flush them out and to see where, you know,
We don't necessarily have an answer.
What is the best way forward?
We're, we're speculating probably just as much as we're getting speculation coming back from the school of government, because this is new. There's, there's no interpretation, other than the individual interpretation that everybody is making over it. There's no litigation. There's no, we haven't had any clarification of it, that, you know, this is all new for everybody, and so everybody is trying to figure out exactly how this fits and what we need to do in order to not violate it. So we're, we're still at that point. We're trying to figure it out. I have some more questions that I can go back to the school of government with, you know, to come up maybe with a plan of how we're doing this, and I, I might get a few examples of, you know, from our county manager to say, okay, this is a situation, a scenario that we have every single year. Here's how many of our board members serve in this capacity on this board. You know, here are some direct examples. How do we get around with this? And then maybe use that as a template. Instead of just blanket recuse, recusal, say, okay, here's the little workarounds that we can go with each one of these, and it may be systematically, each and every one that we deal with, something different for each one possibly. I, I just don't, I don't want us to say, okay, we have to do this, and I don't want a resignation across the board. I don't know if that's the best interest for the nonprofits and for our county at this point.
Just wait till somebody sees somebody, and then go from there.
I don't like that.
Litigation sets the standards.
Generally, you are correct. I like right now just the interpretations and seeing if we could work around it with that.
I think another question for me is, is the, you know, kind of the spirit of the law. It's kind of what Mr. John was talking about, is, you know, the reasons for these. Of course, that was kind of in a little different section, I think, but here you could see, you know, if, if we do the workaround, and let's say we recuse ourselves from the different votes taken, well, then still, if we're a member of the board that the funding is going to, and we're not an ex officio member, we're a voting member, which means, and then we're, we're a member of this higher political body, and that the intent is to not have unhealthy influence to let contracts from that organization to whoever's providing services. So even with the workaround, I don't think we're actually addressing the spirit of the law. If, if we do it and recuse ourselves here, but then still remain as a member of that body who is then contracting with agencies and providers and things, so, in, in the conversation, I would, I would want to try to, because I respect the spirit of the law. I think it makes sense. But how do you, how do you achieve it in such a small community where we all serve on so many different boards?
Maybe by the way of each of you individually having the options of what could be done, and then each of you individually deciding which way you want to handle it.
But I have seen a school of government paper that specifically states that this applies to ex officios. We, we can't even get around it with the ex officio.
No, the only option that was presented was it would either have to be a contract of some kind with the nonprofit, and then potentially line item, line items that are brought forward from the budget officer. brought forward from the budget officer, you know, like we do, and you just abstain from that vote.
We would be negotiating 15 contracts a year?
Or more.
Thank you. I was wondering when you were going to finally make the trip.
Mr. Irwin is exactly right. This bill was written for a specific reason. He's exactly right. It was. Initially, and I was just reading the bill, and I don't see it worded in there, it was not supposed to apply to smaller communities, because of the fact that you just mentioned, that there's just not enough people here to serve on these nonprofit boards, and elected officials end up serving on them. I mean, my wife's one in Blowing Rock as well. It was not supposed to affect towns under 15,000 and counties under a certain population. But I do not see it in that bill. Let me try to get something, we can amend, we can amend this without a problem, to where smaller communities are not affected. Larger communities...
Is she a copy of the bill?
It was supposed, it was supposed to be written that way. And it, it may be in here somewhere. It may be in one of these articles somewhere.
It isn't.
Okay. It was supposed to be there. Let me work on this and see if we can, because communities like this, I mean, they need y'all serving on these nonprofit boards. There's nobody, there's not enough people to serve.
We don't even have 11,000 in total population of the county.
Yeah. I mean, little towns are the same way. I mean, Blowing Rock's 1,200 people. And they've got multiple nonprofit boards. So let me check into this, and we'll try to get this covered before budget time.
Thank you.
And which we may, we may have to sidestep stuff, because your budget time coinciding with short session, there's a narrow window in there. But we'll see if we can't do something about this, because this is not what it was intended for.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, if I may propose a 15-minute break for the meeting of our representative and the replenishment and replacement of bodily fluids.
Second, let's let Mr. Carter finish his topic here. You want to say something?
I think we covered it. I was just going to confirm that timing is an issue, and understanding that there could be some assistance with that's great. But as a subtle reminder, you know, June 30 is your last day. And ideally, we, or at least I, like to have it done first meeting in June, so that I am not in that crazy chaos syndrome.
15-minute recess.
It don't matter now, because you can still...
We'll have to call our meeting back to order. Next order of business will be bylaws for subcommittees. Commissioner John Irwin.
This is one of the things that frankly, we may have an answer to, depending on what's going to come out with Senate Bill 473. However, we also have another issue that we need to look at. The TDA, I call it a subcommittee. I don't know anything else that we could call it, since it was formed by the county commissioners, and they report to the county commissioners. To me, it fills the definitions of a subcommittee. Now, Drew has contacted school of government and asked them specifically, can we require them to have bylaws? Well, if we form them, we dictate what they need to do. And we have a situation that's come before us right now, where there's a grant request, and there has been money in the past through grants that the TDA has made to various organizations that would be called into question. Here we have a Allegheny Jubilee that is paying for performers. And if you look at the enclosure that I gave you, we have a grant request going to the TDA that if they provide the grant, they're going to be paying for the performers that are going to be competing for clientele with a for-profit business in Allegheny County. So, poor old Mr. Jones, he's there. He's paying his property taxes. And those property taxes are going to subsidize this competition. The only way that I know to bypass this is either come up with a bylaw that says, that gives them some guidelines whenever this situation arises, or policies and procedures. The county commissioners have policy and procedures that we follow in conducting our business. We can dictate that on to the TDA and possibly other committees that have been formed under the auspices of the county commissioners. And I would just like a feeling of the commissioners in regards to this matter.
We will open the floor for discussion on the subcommittee matters. Any concerns from the commissioners, let it be known. Or do we want to go ahead and study this further, or get a little more input on this, or just feeling of the board? Thank you. Put on down number eight, the AIA agreement. Mr. Michael Carter.
Inside your package, you have two AIA agreements with R and D Architects. The document B102 is basically your standard form that identifies all the terms and conditions. The document B203 is the more specific to the courthouse facility study itself, the cost, the expectations. Both of these late to the courthouse facility survey, would ask for the board's consideration and approval of such. I would defer to Ms. Klein if there are any concerns about the agreements in form, but...
No, the only thing, obviously, I think in anything that we do going forward, we would also, if any money is being spent, we would add our audit language. That's it.
The only change that I would just point out is small and material. It's almost humorous to me, because on the last page of B102, they refer to me as Michael P. Carter, and I'm not quite sure what the P represents, but I'll make that change.
A motion that we approve under general business, points eight and nine. Mr. Chair.
Got a motion to accept. Give her a second.
Dang it.
Motion's second. Any further discussion? Not all in favor. Five vote. Rita Miller.
Morning.
Good morning.
Questions on the consent agenda for today?
Mr. Chairman, I have no questions. And if no other commissioner has questions, I would move to approve.
Motion to approve. Give her a second. Got a second. Any further discussion? Not all in favor. Five vote.
Thank you.
Thank you. On wait for five seconds.
[laughing]
Can't imagine comments.
Chairman, I have just a couple this morning. First one is remembering that the board recognized Commissioner Luthman on her birthday, and the appreciation... recognized Commissioner Lufman on her birthday and the appreciation that went along with that. I did want to say that on March 10th, another commissioner had a birthday, and that is Commissioner John Irwin. So I didn't want it to go without recognition of his achievement as well.
And he wants us to thank him?
No.
I think so.
Oh, no.
That's all right. Payback is a meta back.
Second, second item is just an information received. Some language from the VFW, basically welcoming our Veteran Services Officer Marge Gray as a representative of the veterans of foreign wars. And that she can do the preparation, presentation, and prosecution of claims in regards to that. So that's an accomplishment I wanted to identify as well.
Hopefully so.
The third one is, as we continue on with the courthouse project, I know that both Commissioner Irwins are on the courthouse committee. And I would like, I have sent a request to our courts to see if there is a time later this week that we can get together to just kind of talk about the project, get some feedback. Once I execute these agreements with R and D, part of their process will also be fieldwork, which will have meetings and such with the staff as well. But internally, I would like just to put on your calendar sometime later this week, the opportunity to get together and talk about that. And the fourth thing is just, just an information. As everyone, I guess, is or will be aware, we are transitioning our phone and internet systems as we move through phasing those ends. There has been some hiccups along the way, which is to be expected with this transition. I just ask everyone to please understand, help us work through that. So that's all I, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Any commissioner comments? Ladies first. Michelle?
I just want to say how excited I am about this North Carolina Tech Paths. You know, one of the biggest challenges we've had as a community is being able to keep our young people here. And this is going to be a doorway where we can, you know, provide them with a quality education while they're also able to get gainful employment in the tech industry. So I just think that's very exciting. And it has very long-term positive ramifications for the future. This could affect, you know, your children and your grandchildren. So really excited about that. I'd also like to say that with the increases in some wages at social services, I'm on that board, we have been able to hold on to more employees there instead of losing them to other counties. So that's been a positive thing. And also been able to make some new hires. So I think the same is true with the Sheriff's Department. And I'd also like to say a thank you to our volunteer firefighters. There's been some wildfire activity and very thankful for those folks. That's a scary thing living here in the mountains. And you could lose your, your property very easily. Thanks to all those folks who get out and fight these fires. That's all I've got.
Commissioner John.
Well, yes, I alluded to whatever Mr. Joins was speaking today. Mr. Joins advised that he was uncomfortable with public speaking. But whenever we met on March the 17th at the Jubilee, he expressed a number of things that basically he wanted to point out. And I will read them. The Jubilee was established, or I'll paraphrase him, in 1994. Now, a lot of his clientele are traveling from 50-plus miles to attend the performances at the Allegheny Jubilee. It receives no taxpayer support. His clientele are generally from 96 to 30, as he stated. Most of the elderly are utilizing the park on Main Street in Sparta. Now, Sparta has agreed to close off of Main Street. That is not an issue that the county commissioners have a dog in the fight. It depends on ticket sales to pay its performers and maintain the venue. And Allegheny Jubilee has supported Music on Main. And to date, no one has discussed the date change from Friday to Saturday night, putting it in competition with the Jubilee with Mr. Joins. And that is as of today. Also noted were the number of events that were being scheduled for Muddy Creek. Now, that Muddy Creek is a venue that is owned by the co-Vice Chair of the Arts Council. Now, this is where it comes in. Arts Council has requested money both from the TDA and from the county commissioners. They've requested $6,000. So from the county commissioners, if we put it in the budget, we're taking tax money and we are providing them. And I have provided all of the requests to the TDA here showing that they are going to spend $6,000 to bring in entertainment at Muddy Creek, at which they will be selling tickets. And also, the venue will benefit by the meals and things of that that's served. So he had no problems with that whenever it was on Friday night. But now you bring it in and you're competing with the Allegheny Jubilee. The other thing that he specifically touched on multiple times was the Allegheny Jubilee is now in competition with events that subsidized by Allegheny tax dollars and the county, in the county budget and the tourist development authority. Now, in reviewing the scheduled events, and this is on the Arts Council's website, the events that are going to compete with the Allegheny Jubilee are five events and Music on Main, excuse me, 12 events that the Arts Council has scheduled, and five events of Music on Main will be competing for them. Now, the enclosure that I provided the other commissioners shows a request for $6,000 from the county budget and a grant of $5,000 from the TDA. And I also showed a, provided a document that shows an explanation and description. Now, the grant from the TDA is for $6,000, excuse me, $5,000, but they, excuse me, the grant from the TDA is for the following events. And this will be Saturdays in the Park, Music on Main, Backwoods Music Festival, and The Beat Goes On. That request totals $20,000. But on the county request for funds, it only, it shows that they are requesting five from the TDA. There's discrepancy there. We've already noticed, noted that the Muddy Creek is owned by the co-Vice Chairman of the Arts Council. So question mark. Based on the information provided, the issues raised by Mr. Joins are valid, in my opinion. We're going to have to look at this. You know, I don't mind people competing. I don't mind the Arts Council providing funds to bring entertainment into Allegheny County. But whenever you are going to change your date to where you are in competition with an enterprise that has been in business for 28 years, and tax money is not being properly utilized, in my opinion. Same thing with the TDA. Now, the TDA is a separate organization. They can make their decision on their own. We've already brought up, and the other committee members are not interested in providing guidance through a bylaws or any other way. Now, one thing I really want to point out is, and I did not bring it to my letter, but whenever you start looking at venues for this entertainment, we've got venues other than one particular enterprise. Fairgrounds. We have the School Auditorium. Whenever you put this in a small venue, you cut out a lot of the county residents. If you schedule events in the fairgrounds, we could bring some people in, raise some money, and start utilizing that facility to a greater extent. As Bobby said, that's one of the greatest assets we've got in this county. School Auditorium may not be available, but that's a possibility. We don't control that. So that is what Mr. Joins brought up, and I agree with him. Now, good news. Saturday, the Department of North Carolina Marine Corps League had its quarterly meeting in North Wilkesboro, North Carolina. The guest speaker that we had on board for the luncheon was the widow of Benny Parsons, where she was able to announce to us that, as we sit here, there are bulldozers taking up the asphalt on the old North Wilkesboro Speedway, which will be rebuilt in the original configuration. Nice part about it is Camping World, the Camping World Company, which sponsors the Camping World Truck Series in NASCAR, has already contacted her. And their first race will be a dirt track truck race, July 2021, in North Wilkesboro. The North Wilkesboro Speedway is coming back. The Smith family has agreed to it. The State of North Carolina has provided $18 million to refurbish the track and to bring it back to its original configuration. And it will be asphalt. The original configuration was dirt. I remember attending it as a small child. But racing is coming back to this region, and I look forward to it and welcome it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Irwin.
Yeah, just a few things here. I want to kind of talk about, thank the Budget Committee for starting to work. I know y'all put in a lot of time and effort into that. And I want to just publicly make some positions, I guess, on show of support for some areas that, and I know we've all talked about some of these, but I do hope that there is, these are certainly looked at and maybe helped a little bit more than we have last year, if at all possible. I know you got to balance everything out. But the effort in the group of the Chamber for Economic Development, I certainly support their plan and their effort and hope to see some fruits from that as they go over the next year or so. I know Ash County's, their amount of money in their budget is somewhere around $180,000 for this same service. So being able to partner all of these, I think, we're currently doing $50,000 or $60,000. I would certainly support that or a little more if we could. Also, we had a meeting, and I know county manager was in it with the library, where they, you know, had some employee raises that they were trying to do and a plan. And we helped them some, a little more last year than at the end through the public comment section. But I hope we can lean in their direction with a little bit more. It wasn't a lot, but in the grand scheme of things, it all adds up. Of course, the rescue squad is an area. Fire departments, of course, I think we're off to a pretty good plan there. But one thing I want to say publicly is, I don't think the reserve fund, I haven't been real tickled with how that sort of went. I was glad we had some money there to give them. But I think it's basically there, where we rounded up what the actual request was to the next penny, and then that went into a reserve fund. And then basically, they've come back and asked for it, and we give it to them. So I would, I don't know that that's really, makes a lot of sense to continue to do it that way. I think just set the rate at their ask. And, you know, they have, they know what they have. And let them make plans for whatever problems or issues that they may foresee. And of course, they can always come to the county if there's outside need. And then another, and this happens to be one that I serve on, is the JCPC. There's a lot of these small counties, and the funding that comes for programs is never enough. And this year, we had put out RFPs for services for our youth in a couple of areas. And the proposals were more than what we had funding for. And they're going to probably increase their ask locally a little bit. And I'm not, I'm just saying I would support, you know, looking at these and increases if at all possible. And these are not, you know, these are not the only ones, but these are just some currently that I've had discussions with lately and look forward to seeing the budget. I know there's a lot of work before it'll come to us. But just, that's just basically an FYI. And thank all of you that are putting a lot of time and effort into it. That's all.
Just a few things. And really, several of them are for Representative Pickett. And I appreciate him being here today. I think this is the first time that we've had representative just come in and just sit and talk and not try to ask for anything, but listen to what the county's problems are. So I'm going to give him a list. Start with, it's our tier schedule. Allegheny used to be in tier one. We've been moved to tier two. And that's, that's not worked out well for us. I know the General Assembly changed the format, how that was, the tiers were handed out. And one of our big things that we thought we'd never get out of tier ones because of the population. And our population is, if you look back in history, it's remained roughly the same for the last 60, 70 years. We go down, we're a little over 10,000 now. There for a while, we were a little over 11,000. And I think the threshold, I can't remember the exact number, was, used to be like 18,000 or 19,000, something along that line. So with that formula, there's more than just population. But I would ask him to keep that in mind whenever that rescheduling comes up. The next thing is, we've been working on a speed limit reduction by the state that happened four or five months ago, literally overnight. Didn't even take overnight. I came to a meeting, it was 9:00 in the morning, it was 55. I went home at 12. It dropped to 45. That speed limit's been there longer than I've been around, more than 75 years. And I don't understand their formula for changing. I know they have a catch-all phrase for safety. Well, that's a catch-all phrase for anything. And I'm just hoping that possibly we can look at getting it back to 55. I know some counties have been successful in changing, reversing DOT's decisions. And, you know, if they look at it maybe one more time and just see what we can do. The other thing is our traffic tank inspections and our well inspections through the Health Department, we, as you know, we're Allegheny, Ash, and Watauga. And right now, the building boom is still going on, and the weather is changing. But we're looking at some people getting a, I have one person that's, his application's been in for 55 days today. I just talked to the Health Department, and they said he's still 17th on the list. This could be months before he gets his application approved. And we don't have months up here. Our building cycle is probably around nine to 10 months. And this is totally unacceptable. The Health Department is, in my opinion, has done everything that they can. But it's the rules and regulations that come out of the General Assembly that hamper what they can do. And I think our Health Director, Jennifer Green, is working with people in Raleigh and trying to come up with some different. with people in Raleigh and trying to come up with some different answers. And, but I would, I would certainly hope that Representative Pickett could keep that in mind. The other thing, it was my turn to be in Raleigh this past week, and I had the pleasure of seeing Dale Flowwell again. He's our state treasurer. And he just wanted me to pass on the compliment to the county about getting off the state watch list about our finances that were, he says we're going in the right way. He's hoping we'll be there in another two to three years. I think with our county manager, we might get there in a year, year and a half. So I just wanted to pass that compliment on from him. It meant a big deal to me. And I think it ought to be a big deal to the taxpayers of the county. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Bobby.
Well, I don't have much to add. I echo the same sentiments that all the rest of them has put forth here. And I do praise this North Carolina tech path. I think that's a great way to keep our young people here, a lot of them anyway. And the fire departments, as Michelle said, they've been busy as can be the last couple of weeks. And they stay busy about all the time. But the brush fire season's coming up, and they was down on Surry County, I guess, low gap. Other than that, some of them are fighting a fire down there, and the wind blowing like everything. But we assured hats off to our volunteers. There are a good bunch of people and the rescue squad and all included. And the other thing I want to touch base on, we've talked a little in the past, is the Affordable Connectivity Program. It's a, came under the infrastructure bill. It's what it does. It's providing $30 a month to pay your internet bill. And there's a few qualifications, but a lot of people in Allegheny County would qualify for that if they have kids or grandkids and an internet service, and they could apply for that. And they also pay a one-time $100 pay for a tablet or a computer. And if you run over the library or call them, they'll be happy to sit down and fill out the little applications. And there's been some participation, but I feel like there could be a lot more. Won't sound like much, but you know, that's 360 bucks a year. And it's a whole lot in some places, some examples. But it's out there. People just go seek it, and the library's agreed to go along with that. And the septic tank permit problem is a real problem. I get calls all the time from realtors, it's a hole in progress up. And hopefully, something can become in the state to take care of that. And I too appreciate Mr. Pickett coming over today and being with us. That's a, that's a good thing. I look forward to working with him. With that being said, we have a request for closed session under General Statute 143-318.11.a/3. Attorney, consultant attorney. It's an entertaining motion at this time.
So moved.
Got a motion here, second. Go in closed session. Second, go in closed session. All in favor? Five votes.